Good morning, I'm sorry, good evening ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the October 21st, 2013 City Council Meeting. Roll call please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Alderman Moizio.
Present.
Alderman Beedling.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
All present, Mayor.
Thank you. Invocation, Bishop Culver?
Father, we thank you again for another City Council Meeting. We thank you for our mayor, for all of our aldermen, for all of this retired administration. We ask that you bless our city and continue to bless it. We remember those peoples in Nevada that was killed within the school. We thank you for safety in our schools, but for longevity. We ask that you continue to bless, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll give you a quick update of what's been happening in the city. On October 8th, Waukegan played host to 27 professionals from Moscow. The School of Civic Engineering, what they wanted to do is communicate with us and see how our community works, and how effectively it produces the products we do. The delegation toured various sites in Waukegan, including the police station, fire station, and library. What amazed me the most is they asked me if our policemen were actually actors because they were so handsome, and the women asked me if I could marry them to the policemen. I thought that was very amusing. They had lunch at the Yacht Club followed by dinner at 17 North Genesee. We tried to let the delegation from Russia see who we are, what we do, and how we operate. Aaron Lawler from the county met with me, and we did a two-hour presentation to them here at the City Council Chambers. The event was made possible through the University of Illinois Chicago Institute, and thanked Megan McKinnon for inviting the Russians to our community to see what we do. On October 17th, Chicago's number-one nightly news station, Univision, broadcast live from downtown Waukegan. They are the largest Hispanic television station in the state of Illinois. They filmed their news event from the inside the Genesee Theater. George Torres was on the program. George Torres explained to the viewing audience what Waukegan is, what we do, and how we do it. The presentation was very well received. We also had the radio station here, the Spanish radio station, Quebuna. They broadcast live as well from the Genesee Theater. After the event was over, there was a large crowd there. They stayed and took advantage of some of the businesses downtown Waukegan, which was very refreshing for me. Last Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, I spent my evenings at the Illinois Municipal League Conference in Chicago. I met with the mayors of Wasworth, Park City, and North Chicago. We spent three days together strategizing how we want to approach the difficulties in each of our communities. It was a very rewarding weekend for me. This afternoon, I spoke with Governor Quinn about the casino. Governor Quinn assured me that Waukegan is on his radar for the casino. We also talked about some other issues that may cause a delay. As most of you know, the veto session is in November. It's coming up quickly. During that veto session, there will be several topics of conversation. The number-one on the agenda is going to be the pension reform. That is the issue that they're going to address first. They're also going to address the same-sex marriage issue. The governor was very blunt with me, and he said really the priority for him is the pension reform, which I have to agree is a real pressing issue. This afternoon, for the first time since my election, I spent the afternoon with Senator Terry Link. We had a very cordial conversation. We were both placed on the Route 53-120 Committee to address the proposed new extension of Route 53 into Waukegan along the corridor of 120. Very fruitful meeting. It was very interesting. Terry and I both agreed that we would mend fences and work through whatever difficulties we had, and work in the best interest of this community, and we will do that, I promise you that. Tonight, we're going to recognize some volunteers. Once a month, at the City Council meetings, we will recognize Waukeganites that made a positive impact on our community by volunteering. We're working to generate a nomination form for our social media pages and website, but until this is ready, please call my office at (599) 2510 to nominate someone you feel deserves this recognition. A lot of people in this community do a lot of work for nothing. This community, like most other communities, would be nothing without volunteers. We are very fortunate to have a lot of people who spend a lot of their own time and effort, even their own money, to help our community prosper and grow. Tonight, I want to take this opportunity to get started with this effort and recognize a bunch of people who exemplify exactly what this type of community spirit is. The City of Waukegan does hereby recognize Jamie McCaffrey, Jeremy Cribb, Jim Neal, Jim Rizzo, Kevin Kofenhor, Mike Huff, Kevin Lamanna, Jerry Mahiro, Gary Turner, Bob Sobel, as Volunteers of the Month for September 2013 for helping spruce up the 10th Street Business Quarter by painting a wall on the corner of 10th and McAllister. If you haven't seen it, please go see that. So, I would like to have those people I mentioned, please step forward. I know you're all here. Stand up. Ladies and gentlemen, these are the people who make Waukegan work. The time to give a big gift to our community is placed, and I personally thank all of you very much. Thank you very much. (APPLAUSE). The City of Waukegan does hereby recognize the artists Patrick Tufa and Shelby Johnson as Volunteers of the Month for September 2013 for the mural that was painted on 10th Street and McAllister. If you go see the mural, you'll be very impressed. When I went down there the night before, I didn't know how they painted this mural and made it come out so nice, until I saw they had a computer screen, and they cast the image of the mural on the wall and traced it. It was amazing to see. And the next day, we all went back, and we painted. I helped paint. I got more paint on myself than I did on the mural, but that's okay, because the end result was very wonderful. Patrick and Shelby, please, Shelby, please stand.
Thank you so much. You need to go see this guy's work. You need to go downtown, you need to go to Art Walk, you need to go to one of these nights downtown and see this man's ability and his talent. I can't even draw straight lines. Great job. All three of you. Thank you so much. (APPLAUSE).
Audience time. Jane Ferry. Oh, I forgot to mention, Jane, did you mention what we did together down the line this weekend? Past week? I'm sure you will.
(INAUDIBLE).
Yep?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the mayor mentioned, we were at lunch and had a meeting with the Lake County Partners. They invited a number of people from different cities, different municipalities, and different organizations to come and listen to a futurist, who I thought was very inspiring. Mr. Mayor, I hope you thought the same. Very, very exciting, very fun, and I think you'll see a lot of that coming to a city near you, so to speak. I also want to thank some volunteers. I don't have anything to hand out, but I want to say thank you so much to the volunteers who worked Zombie Walk and Art Walk this weekend. If you came downtown to see Zombie Walk or participate, it was a boatload of fun. It was the third annual Zombie Walk. Waukegan Arts District has worked very, very hard to put this event together, and it was a riot. So, next year, start marking your calendars. Sometime in October, probably this same time, maybe the third weekend of the month, that Zombie Walk will be back, and I hope you attend. Coming up a little quicker than that is Art Walk in November, November 16th. It's always the third Saturday of the month, so mark your calendar for that. Maybe you can do a little holiday shopping before the holidays actually hit. Before that, even though, before that, I should say, Halloween Fest is happening at Bowen Park this weekend, Saturday, 3:00 to 7:00 p.m., so that should be a lot of fun for the kids. Also on Saturday is a Ray Bradbury Walking Tour. It starts at 10:00, and it is also through the Park District. You can register by calling the Jack Benny Center. And then finally, also for the kids, is Trick or Treat on Sunday, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. Please be very careful. Kids are looking for the candy, and they're looking for the fun, and they are not looking for your cars, so you have to be much more aware of them than they are of you. And then if I could also have you mark your calendars for December 7th, it's going to be our Holiday Walk. It's going to be a lot of fun downtown Waukegan from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. All kinds of events, maybe some school choirs singing in the beautiful Genesee Theater, and a lot of events up and down the street. As the mayor said, the volunteers are really what make Waukegan hum. We have a lot of great volunteers who are honored tonight, and Waukegan Main Street is also honored to have so many volunteers participate day in and day out for us, bringing people to downtown Waukegan. If you are looking for events, you can go to our website, which is waukeganmainstreet.org, or our Facebook page, or you can feel free to call me at the office anytime, (847) 623-6650. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Jane. Chris Blanks, 409 Oak.
Brother Blanks, 409 Oak Street. Couple of things that I wanted to cover tonight. One, which is dealing with the Tiff District. And I just want to encourage the citizens of Waukegan, in particular the First Ward, to make sure you make it out to that hearing. I think it's on November the 4th, right?
Yes.
What time is it? The time?
It's 5:00. 5:00 o'clock.
Yeah. So, it's November the 4th at 5:00, and I think we all need to be here to really be educated on what it's about. Couple of things come to mind when I think about where we're looking at the Tiff District, and particularly in the First Ward. Two things that happen, in many cases, sometime you lose your voting power, you lose your voting block, when citizens are being moved out and commercial is coming in. And so, those are the kind of things that we want to be aware of. We also, you know, we want to be aware of when we're talking about our Tiff Districts and what's going on there. Another thing comes to mind is gentrification. We have to be careful and be respectful of the mom-and-pop stores, and when big commercial companies are coming in, we lose all type of incentives. So, those are the things that we want to be mindful of when it comes to our mom-and-pop stores, as well as looting our voting strength when commercial property come in and residents are moved out. So, I encourage everybody to come out to and be aware and be informed on what this means to your community and the people that live in it. Second of all, as I opened the floor up last week in closing, I'm really concerned about, you know, when it comes to employment and fair treatment. I opened the floor regarding a young lady named Ms. Unis Sanders, and it is my opinion and my view that how she was dismissed and let go from this city was disrespectful, and I think the very process that we used in dismissing her was even more disrespectful. So, I'm going to be supporting her efforts, and any one of similarly situated situations that are disrespected and not, or I should say, taken for granted. So, these are things that we have to be mindful of, because as I said, our citizens and diversity in this city and in this county is very important to the process and the progress of this city, and making sure everybody stays employed and that this city moves forward together, inclusive and not exclusive. Thank you.
Chris, I'd like to clarify something. Tiff Districts will not impact the residence or voting power of anyone in the First Ward. What they'll do is encourage development in the First Ward. It won't displace anyone. No one's going anywhere. It's a tool to help redevelop that area. That's all it is.
Okay. Well, I really hope so, you know. I've had my doubts.
It is.
So, hopefully we can get it, make sure that our feet are held in the fire and nobody's moved out. Thank you.
Julie, 2348 North Lewis.
I'm a teacher, so I have some hands out.
That's good.
Good evening, everyone. Julie Ahern, 2348 North Lewis Avenue. I'm a lifetime Waukeganite, a 20-year veteran teacher in Waukegan, and I just wanted to share the obvious, that it's very hard to raise funds for our students to get updated technology, materials, so we're always looking for different ways. And one way is the abundance of these voting contests on the World Wide Web, and I've read about other communities, one in particular in Tennessee, which has it honed down to a science, and there are like a 25,000 population, yet every year, they win, in particular the U.S. Cellular Contest, $50,000, and they take turns voting for each school each year. So, I just want to throw this out again, that if, as a community, if you hear about a school begging, asking for a vote, if you could just take 30 seconds, and if you're on Facebook or wherever you see it, take a moment, and you could really make a difference in that child's life or that school. And I brought some flyers, if it's okay to hand out tonight, about one that our school is doing. We were able to win $1,000 last year just by people voting for us. We used it for technology, and they're having it again. They are giving away money for 16 schools, and right now, we're school 17, so anything you can do to help us would be so appreciated. The contest ends Halloween, 10/31. It's a daily vote, and I left directions on here. And unfortunately, it doesn't work on cell phones, or I'd ask everybody right now to take out their cellphone, but I hope you can help us. We'd appreciate it so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is motion to approve minutes of October 7th, 2013 regular meeting. Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Rivera. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution, proclamation, presentation, and appointments. A) Resolution for the Waukegan Park District, 2013 National Gold Medal Award for Excellence in Park District and Park and Recreation Management, and whereas the American Academy for Park and Recreation Administration, in partnership with the National Recreation and Park Association, awarded this honor to the Waukegan Park District live during the NRPA Congress in Houston, Texas, October 8th, 2013, and whereas the Waukegan Park District was judged on their ability to address the needs of those they serve through the collective energies of citizens, volunteers, patrons, staff, and elected officials, and whereas the Waukegan Park District has demonstrated excellence in parks and recreation through long-range planning, resource management, volunteerism, environmental stewardship, program development, professional development, and agency recognition. Whereas the Waukegan Park District provides personal, social, economic, and environmental benefits through parks, recreation, cultural, and activities for its constituents. Whereas the Waukegan Park District believes that through their participation in parks, recreation, and cultural activities, our citizens socially develop a better appreciation and understanding for each other, enhance their health and well-being, and conserve and protect our environment. And whereas the Waukegan Park District provides opportunities that have positive benefits and outcomes for our citizens and make our city a great place to live, work, and play. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Waukegan hereby seeks to recognize and congratulate the Waukegan Park District on their National Gold Medal Award, and express their appreciation for the excellent parks, programs, and services provided to our citizens. Dated this 21st day of October, 2013. Signed, Wayne Motley, Mayor, Artist Yancy, Clerk. Craig, can you come up? This is a real honor for me, because I spent 18 years of my life with these people, and last year, we finished second. So, I was hoping that this year they would do it, and obviously, they did, and I'm so proud of all of you. All of you, thank you.
You've got to hold this, because it's really heavy.
I think Greg should hold it.
No. It worked out.
Okay. Smile. Greg, want to say something? Go to the microphone.
Yeah, come on, Greg and I.
You go to the microphone.
Yeah, you can just really, really, really. We're absolutely delighted to bring home the gold to Waukegan. I'd like to introduce our commissioners, Bill Soraka, Ms. Patricia Foley, George Bridges Jr., and of course, Terry Duffy. We cannot, we could not have done this without the support of our community, the City of Waukegan. And Wayne, you know well that we've been working long and hard for this and for the people in this community, so we certainly appreciate all the help we get from the community and the city, and we're just delighted to have this. So, I think Greg might want to say a couple of words.
Sure. Just to reiterate what Janet said about, you know, working cooperatively with the city. Over the years, we've had some great cooperative relationships. Many of the neighborhoods in the new developments all have parks, and that's because of the cooperation we get from the city to work with the developer to put parks in there. You're recognizing volunteers this evening. We have so many volunteers that help us throughout the community, and we're just really glad that, you know, we could bring this home for Waukegan, put us on the map, and over the years, people from around the country have recognized what the Waukegan Park District has been doing, but this is the tip of the iceberg. This is the highest award we can win, and we're just so glad and honored that we could share it with you all this evening, and thank you so much for the recognition, because this is not an individual recognition, this is a community-wide recognition. So, this is not, the park district is all of us, so all of you should congratulate yourselves for being a part of this great honor, so thank you.
Resolution for Victor Sneller, an appreciation of his WWII service, and Susan Chavez for the assistance given during a medical emergency involving Mr. Sneller. Mr. Clerk?
Resolution 13R-77. Whereas Victor Sneller served with General Patton and the 3rd Army in Normandy, Northern France, Central Europe, Ardennes, and the Rhineland during WWII, and whereas Victor Sneller was awarded the Good Conduct Medal, the American Theater Service Medal, the European and Mid Eastern Service Medal, and the Army Service Medal with the Silver Star. And whereas Victor Sneller relocated to Waukegan, Illinois in 1946, and whereas Victor Sneller was working in his garage on the evening of March 3rd, 2013, with the temperature at 8 degrees Fahrenheit when he suffered a medical emergency. And whereas Susan Chavez, a 2013 Waukegan High School graduate and neighbor to Victor Sneller, heard a noise and investigated and found Victor in need of assistance, and whereas Victor, whereas Susan Chavez immediately phoned 911 and summoned Waukegan Fire and Rescue, who offered medical assistance to Victor Sneller, thus preventing a possible tragedy from occurring. Now, therefore, be it hereby resolved that Mayor Wayne Motley and members of the Waukegan City Council hereby express their sincere appreciation to Susan Chavez. Be it further resolved that a suitable imposible copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to Victor Sneller and Susan Chavez, dated this 21st day of October, 2013. Signed, Wayne Motley, Mayor, Artist Yancy, Clerk.
It's an honor. Thank you for your service. Thank you so much.
Bye.
Susan?
Bye.
This is what I'm saying. This is why Waukegan is such a good community. People like you can get involved, and you save this town, and I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
(APPLAUSE).
Mr. Mark, would you like to make a stop for it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Susan, that's a terrific thing that you have done for this gentleman, and if all people would take after you, we'd have a much better world to live in. Mr. Sneller, I had the opportunity to stand on Normandy Beach about three weeks ago, and I understand by looking and walking through the cemetery what it meant to go on those beaches and be with Patton and be in those tanks on D-Day and thereafter. And I think every American, and I want to say, be one of them to say, we don't get the opportunity to thank our WWII veterans enough. I want to take this opportunity on behalf of myself, the City of Waukegan, and I know the mayor reflects everything I'm saying today. Thank you for your service. Thank you for what you did, and every American should have the opportunity to stand on Normandy Beach and understand the price of freedom. Thank you.
Wayne. Wayne. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
Thank you so much. Susan? This is what I'm saying. This is why Waukegan is such a good community. People like you can get involved, and you save this town. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Mr. Martin, I'd like to make a quick word. Thank you, Mayor. Susan, that's a terrific thing that you have done for this gentleman. And if all people would take after you, we'd have a much better world to live in. Mr. Sneller, I, I had the opportunity to stand on Normandy Beach about three weeks ago. And I understand by looking and walking through the cemetery what it meant to go on those beaches and be with Patton and be in those tanks on D-Day and thereafter. And I think every American, and I want to say, be one of them to say, uh, we don't get the opportunity to thank our World War Veterans enough. I want to take this opportunity on behalf of myself, the City of Waukegan, and I know the mayor reflects everything I'm saying today. Thank you for your service. Thank you for what you did. And every American should have the opportunity to stand on Normandy Beach and understand the price of freedom. Thank you.
Wayne, Wayne, uh, Tom, Alderman Conkin.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to make a comment also. Mr. Sneller is, lived in the Second Ward for forty years after he came back, or he's lived in the Second Ward since he came back. I had a chance to write him a letter of thank you when he went on his honor flight. I hope you had a good time when you went on your honor flight. Uh, I'd like to also thank the Sneller family also. Mrs. Sneller actually got me to Lion School when I was five years old, about forty-eight years ago. Made sure I got to kindergarten. She was our crossing guard. What I want to say is our World War II heroes, just like, uh, Corporation Counsel, Mr. Martin, said, they are heroes. Uh, these are guys that, when the country was attacked, gave up their lives and their livelihoods to make sure that the country was safe and to do the things that was asked of them. And when they went away, they went away for years. So these men are all heroes. And Susan, you became a hero when you saved a hero. You're a good neighbor, and like Wayne said, that's what we need here in Waukegan. Thank you.
Uh, next one is the appointment of Edward Pierre Robinson to the Waukegan Public Library Board. Mr. Robinson, are you here? Would you please step forward, sir, and make, uh, you make a few comments? This gentleman was highly recommended by Richard Lee, the Director of the Library. When an appointment is made, I like to have a correspondence with the person recommending the person. I read your resume, sir, and I am very impressed, and I welcome you. Please, uh, first of all, a motion by Alderman Bedling, second by Alderman Valco, to accept the appointment of Mr. Edward Robinson to the Public Library Board. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling. Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson, if you will, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I just wanted to thank, um, all of you for the improvement of my appointment to the Library Board. I'm a born and raised Waukegan resident through the Waukegan Grade Schools, High School, and also a graduate of Central State University, which is also Sam's alma mater. But I've been, for the past five years, I've been the Outreach Director. Waukegan Community Church, um, has been involved in numerous, um, civil activist duties as, as far as getting to know the grassroots people of this community. So I just appreciate and think it's a blessing that, uh, given the stellar work that the, uh, the library has, uh, achieved this year as being the best, I think it's a blessing for me to actually help continue, uh, the prominence of that library and help in any way I can. So I just thank all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson, and welcome to the City of Waukegan and Waukegan Public Library.
All right, now, thank you.
Committee reports, Insurance Committee, Alderman Cunningham.
Insurance Committee met roughly at six forty-seven. Uh, Item A, uh, motion to recommend the City Council authorize proper city officials permission to, no, no, I'm sorry, I apologize. Motion to approve the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen Casualty and Property Insurance Program in premiums as presenting, excluding self-insured retention or deductible amount for the total of nine hundred forty-one thousand and five dollars. I so move.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Bedling. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling. Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Item B, motion to approve the renewal of underwriting Safety and Claims, Inc. contract to provide third-party administration services to the City of Waukegan two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen insurance program in amount not to, not to exceed, uh, seventy-five thousand dollars.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Bedling. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Item C, motion to authorize a proper city official to settle Police Department Claim, Claim Number W.C. as in Charles, two zero one, two eight six, six seven five zero, for the amount not to exceed forty-five thousand, sixty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Bedling. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is Public Works Committee. Alderman Moizio.
Thank you. We have two items. Uh, Item A, motion to recommend the City Council authorize a proper city officials permission to draft specifications and advertise for bids for a backup generator at the Lakers Sanitary Lift Station. Funds for this project are available online on five 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 nine one six zero two seven zero four three, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Your Honor, we can just voice, voice vote these. These are just, these are just, uh, drafts for specifications, so. Motion to recommend the City Council authorize a proper city officials permission to draft specifications and advertise for bids for a backup generator and switchgear at the water plant. Funds for this project are available using bond proceeds online on five 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 nine one six zero two seven zero one eight. I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Tempest. Uh, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Your Honor. That's it.
Item number eight, old business, there is none. Reports and Communications. There was just, it was just, uh, just, uh, uh, next is, uh, Reports and Communications. Tina, would you like to come forward and, and address this? This has to do with police and fire pensions. Tina Smagalsky is our Finance Director, and she will, uh, make the notifications.
Um, you should have all received their, um, reports from the pension funds. These are the required reports per state statute that must be presented to the City Council, uh, prior to the City Council considering a tax levy for the upcoming year. Um, so you should have received a hard copy as well as an emailed copy of these reports. Um, usually there's just a voice vote to accept the reports and to the record. If there's any questions on the reports, neither of the Pension Fund Presidents can make it tonight, one's on shift, and, and the other one, I think, might be out of town. But I could try to answer any questions if you have any.
Anyone have a question for Ms. Smagalsky? Alderman Bedling?
Under, uh, Item number four, it, uh, assumed investment return, actual investment return is listed twice except one says fiscal year ending twenty-twelve.
Where's that reported at?
Um, under number four, and it's the same on both. Um, under number four, the first assumed investment return is always seven percent. That's established by state statute. The eight point nine five percent return for the police pension fund is for the fiscal year ending four thirty, two thousand thirteen, which is the date of the report. The prior year investment return for the prior, that was four thirty twelve, that was one point eight three percent. And then on the fire pension, the same, um, eight point two two percent for them is for the fiscal year most recently ended four thirty, two thousand thirteen. And then that, it's giving you comparative data to the year before where their investment return was three point five four percent.
I'm, I'm sorry, Tina. Where was their, where was their investment return?
Um, the police pension had a actual investment return for the last fiscal year of eight point nine five percent.
Mm-hmm.
The previous year was one point eight three. And for fire, it was eight point two two for the fiscal year ending four thirty, two thousand thirteen. And in the prior fiscal year, it was three point five four percent.
Okay. And, and, Your Honor, I do, I don't know if I have questions, but I want to get some things straight, straight now. I know over the prior, the prior administration really put a lot of emphasis on this pension, how they were really sucking money out of us so they can pay this. Can you kind of bring us up to date as to where we're at with that now?
Um, what, what part of that? Do you want me to, the funding ratios?
The funding, I, I know it was such a hot item.
Um, well, I think.
We were in conversations every week that we're putting too much money over here or not putting too much money. The police fund is gonna be, they're not gonna have money to take care of our retirees. So where are we kind of at with, with that kind of conversation?
Well, I, I don't think that we're atypical to other single employer police and fire pension funds in the state of Illinois. I don't know that that's necessarily something that's an accomplishment. That's just an observation. Um, we do and have been contributing the statutorily required amount, um, which is set by state statute.
Mm-hmm.
The state did pre, in the previous year, create a tier-two to address some of the long-term funding issues that all state pension funds are seeing right now. Um, currently, we are, for the, um, police pension fund, we are at forty-five point four five percent funded, is our funded ratio. And for fire, our funding ratio is fifty point eight three percent. So that is an improvement over the prior year. Um, but it's still, uh, according to rating agencies, it, they would like to see that funding ratio higher. Um, and then we did by resolution last, I think it was last year, uh, the city dedicated half of the gaming machine revenues go to the pension funds automatically. So that is, in addition to the property tax levy, the city does contribute that percentage to the, uh, police and fire pension funds automatically.
All right, just so we're clear, it is not, I mean, that fund, those funds are not going to be, uh, available for those recipients bout ti- uh, I guess in the time where they're gonna need it. That's not likely to happen in the next ten, twenty, or thirty years, according to some of the numbers that you have right now. Is it safe to say that?
I'm not an actuary. I can't make that assessment.
Okay. Is it safe to say that we're doing our part legally to make sure that fund is there?
We, we have funded the statutory requirements. So we are meeting our legal obligations as a municipality per state statute to both pension funds, yes.
And the reason I bring that up, uh, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, Tina, is that it was beat, this council was beat up so bad that we're not doing enough, we're not putting money in, uh, the money is not gonna be available for our retirees, particularly our, our police and fire. I wanted to be very clear because I used to get those kind of questions as to, we're not doing enough for our, our first responders. I, I, I begged it different then, and I think right now is a testament that we are doing legally what is, that we're supposed to be doing, and we're fi, looking for more ways in order to come up to some of those actuary, uh, standards. You agree with me, yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor, for that latitude.
Uh, motion to accept, uh. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Alderman Bedling.
No, go ahead.
Can we put all new hires on the fine contribution plan to, uh, help get ourselves out of this, uh, problem we have?
Not currently. The state statute governs, um, pension plans for police and fire in the state of Illinois. So the, the City of Waukegan would not have that latitude as an employer. That would take legislative action to make that kind of change.
I wonder why the state does things like that? Because it's very difficult. They have their own pension problems that are much greater than what we have. I, I can't understand why they can't sit down and try to work out some of these problems. The fine benefit pension plans, they're, they're hard to sustain. That's all I have to say.
I have a quick.
Alderman May.
I just have a quick comment. Um, while we are within our legal, uh, obligations to fund the fire and pension, uh, fire and police pensions, our actuary has told us, year after year after year, that he recommends us to fund it higher. Now, obviously, we're strapped, and we haven't done it. But we've been advised, year after year, by an actuary to fund it more, to, to, to put more into these funds because at fifty percent and forty-seven percent, not trying to scare anyone, we are severely underfunded. Yes, we're in the same boat with a lot of other communities across the state. But we have been advised over and over again by our actuaries to put more in. I just want to bring that to light.
Your Honor? Your Honor? Uh, excuse me, one second. Um, Alderman May, I, Ms. Smagalsky and I have sat down, and we agree with you wholeheartedly. And, uh, that will be, will be presented to the City Council, uh, at a later time this year. Alderman, uh, Moizio?
Has that gambling revenue helped at all? Or is it just so minimal? I mean, I'm, I haven't looked at the numbers, but has it helped a little bit to help fund, or not?
Sure. Any, any amount helps.
Right.
You know, there was a time lag between when the business owners remitted the funds to the state, and then the state remits it to the city. Um, so it's, it's not an enormous amount of funding at this point in time. But it is, I think, not only important financially that we're contributing something in addition to property taxes, but the bond, uh, rating agencies like that, we've committed a source of revenue to that. And I believe for the employees, it also shows that the city is dedicated to making sure that their pension funding will be adequate.
Thank you.
Just one more question. Do they have automatic cost of living adjustments in their pensions?
I believe they do, yes.
That's part of the reason that killing the state pension fund.
No.
I, I'm in the Carpers Union. We don't have, uh, cost of living adjustments. Back in the day, when our pension fund was over a hundred percent funded, the retirees would, might get a thirteenth check. But when it's below, there's nothing. Just a second, that's all. Thank you.
But, Your Honor, I, I do have a follow-up question, uh, for Tina. Um, Tina, any event that the investments of a board that we have no control over, that is correct. We don't have control of that board. Is that right? In their investment strategies?
We have two members.
The, the city appoints two out of the five. The city co, well, the mayor appoints two out of the five. I believe that's confirmed by City Council.
Yes.
But they are an independent board, and they do make investment decisions um, under their parameters per state statute.
So that means if their investments don't equal out to what is need to be to cover that, who is responsible for making sure that is covered? I guess I'm, I hope I'm saying this right.
Well, pensions, in the state of Illinois, police and fire downstate pension funds have three sources of funding. Employee contributions, which are set by state statute. And just to note, that police and firemen, like teachers, do not participate in Social Security. So for many of these employees, this is their only retirement.
I agree.
So, um, employee contributions, which is a percent, percentage set by state statute, investment returns on the assets themselves, and then the remaining is made up through employer contribution.
Okay. Thank you.
A motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham, to accept and place on file the report by Tina Smagalsky. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, new business, approved payroll dated October eighteenth, two thousand thirteen, the amount of one million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-four cents. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Item B, approval of civil service payroll dated October fourteenth, two thousand thirteen, in the amount of two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Item C, approval of bills dated October twenty-first, two thousand thirteen, the amount of one million, fourteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-nine cents. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item D, approve of treasury report for September two thousand thirteen. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item E, approval of raffle to be conducted by John Clark School dated October twenty-second, two thousand thirteen. Motion by Alderman Conkin, second by Alderman Newsom. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinances and resolutions. Item A, parking prohibited on Elmwood Avenue, west side from Golf Road to Blanchard Road. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Rivera. Is there amendment to this?
Yeah, I'd like to make an amendment, Mayor.
Amendment? Yes.
We'd like to keep the current language that is on the agenda, but we also need, it's currently under ordinance number zero-five dash zero dash twenty-nine, under parking prohibited at all times on specified streets. We want to vacate the parking restriction on the east side of Elmwood, Golf Road to Blanchard Road, at all times as previously established. So I got a lot of phone calls on this after our last meeting. We're now gonna prohibit it on the west side, but now we're going to allow it on the east side, so we're gonna have to vacate the prohibition on the east side. Corporation Council, Martin and I went over this before the meeting, so that we get this right.
Okay, so you want to make a motion to amend?
Motion to amend.
Okay, motion by Alderman May to amend, to incorporate deleting no parking on the east side of Elmwood Avenue.
Correct.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Okay, now, motion as presented by, to amend the motion as per Alderman May. Okay, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Valco. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry, roll call. Roll call.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Under item C, I'd like to make a correction. The first line of that ordinances, parking prohibited on Elmwood Avenue, west side of Golf Road and Blanchard, be stricken, and it should read, no parking at specified times, seven AM to four PM, school days, Dickinson Street, north side, between Lorraine Avenue and Elmwood Avenue. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
We'll come back for B.
We'll come back to B.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Okay, back to item B, ordinance, no parking on specified times, seven AM to four PM, school days, on Blanchard Road, north side, between Lewis Avenue and Lorraine Avenue. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item D, no parking at specified times, seven AM to seven PM, school days, Elmwood.
Four PM.
Four PM, I'm sorry. School days, Elmwood Avenue, east side, between Dickinson Street and Ballantyne Street. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
I have a quick question, if I could.
Okay, Alderman Bedling.
This is, this is all about parents that drop their kids off for school and pick them up?
Yes.
Who are all, why do they do that, and where do they come from that?
It's also for the ease of the buses, Alderman.
The bus drivers, the bus drivers can't get around.
Yeah, but I mean, who are all these people that have to drop their kids off and pick them up at school? I mean, you can't get the bus, then you obviously live close enough where the children could walk to and from school. Why don't their children just walk back and forth to school, like we used to?
I can't answer that.
Littleport is close to Lewis Avenue, and close to Sunset, and it's an elementary school, so kindergarten, first, second, third graders.
That school's been there how long?
I understand, Alderman, but you know, the demographics.
Because this is like a new problem here, I think.
No, I think we're just, I think we have a lot of traffic problems around our schools, and we became very proactive with this principal and our traffic department. I, they did it, I'm not, I wasn't.
What happens at Hyde Park School?
But I understand, but we came up with a traffic plan to improve the flow around the school. We took the time, and they did a traffic study, and we worked with the school, and we're improving the traffic pattern around the school.
I'm not criticizing.
No, I know, but I'm just saying.
I'm just curious.
We identified a problem, and we're fixing it.
I've heard parents say they're afraid for their children to walk. Afraid of what? Whom? That's what I'd like to know. Point them out. Whom? Where's the problem here? This is on every school. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item E, ordinance, no parking, stopping, and standing of vehicles prohibited at certain times, seven AM to four PM, school days, Blanchard Road, south side, between Lewis Avenue and Elmwood Avenue. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Moizio. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item F, resolution authorizing the acceptance of donated property of the city of Waukegan pursuant to the neighborhood stabilization program, namely, nine-twenty South Martin Luther King Junior Avenue, Waukegan, Illinois, six oh oh eight five. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Conkin. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Do words matter here? Because you said of property of the city of Waukegan, that would be property to the city of Waukegan. I don't know if that has to be corrected or not, but.
What state, what state are they in?
Okay.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item G, resolution authorizing the sale of property by the city of Waukegan pursuant to the neighborhood stabilization program, namely, one-ten South St. James Avenue, Waukegan, Illinois, six oh oh eight five, for the sum of one hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-one cents. Motion by Alderman Bedling, second by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Your Honor?
Yes, yes, sir.
I have a quick question, along that parking with schools and whatnot. I don't know, I think it's been corrected, but I don't know, when I, we used to drive down Ridgeland by Webster, New York Avenue there, I would see the school security staff out there with these little cones, and they had blocked off the street so no one could get through. And I hadn't pursued it because it hasn't happened, I'm assuming that we, somebody's talked to them. They don't have the authority to block off the street and not let traffic come through. I would assume they wouldn't.
No, they don't, Alderman, but what happened during that period of time was, they actually had the bus put out there, stop, the stop sign, and all it was barricade and the light was on. I think it's been corrected.
Okay.
I don't think it's an issue now, but I will look into it.
Yeah, because I think sometimes the school district thinks they have a little more authority than they.
Yeah, I understand that. I will call Dr. Batiste today tomorrow.
Well, it hasn't happened, when I've been going by there, so if it does happen again, I'll give you a call, but it happened for a while, and then it was gone, but I haven't seen it since, so.
Okay.
But if it does, I'll give you a call.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, yes, sir.
If I could make one comment.
Alderman Rivera.
I was gonna say, Alderman's time, but we wanna, I agree with Alderman May, and we all have these, these issues with our schools. But the only way that new system of trying to correct these problems is if our policemen start ticketing people. You know, that cause these problems, that they block the areas where these buses can't get through. So, you know, I know on Washington School, fortunately, they built a new circle drive there, and that worked perfectly, but still, parents are still parking, you know, waiting for their kids on these streets, and the only way to handle these issues is start giving out tickets. So, that's all I have to say.
I don't disagree. Alderman's time, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Yes, I've been down here a long, long time, and Mayor Motley, you have got this council working together better than I've ever seen it work together for the betterment of Waukegan. And the flowers that you see out on the table tonight came from my garden. Frost is coming tonight, I wanted to share them with my fellow Alderman, because I enjoy raising them, and I hope you enjoy them, taking them home tonight.
Thank you.
And I wanted to share them with the council. Thank you.
Thank you, and by the way, I'm the only mayor in Lake County that has a personal florist in the name of Larry Tempest. Thank you, Larry.
They're called delias, and the only bad part, you gotta dig them out. They don't start from seed, you gotta dig them out, because they freeze, they're gone, gone forever. So you gotta dig them out, store them in a nice cold spot, and hope they don't dry up, and then you plant them again in the spring, so. It's a labor of love, but gotta, I love them, they're just beautiful, and they're fun to give away. And I buy my vases for fifty cents at the Salvation Army, so I keep my costs down that way. And I collect the vases, so if you have any old vases, don't be afraid to bring them to City Hall. I'll collect them for you.
Alderman, Corporation Council, Mr. Motley would like to make a comment.
You're very famous. Last weekend, my wife and I were walking through the Botanical Garden in Northbrook, looking at all the flowers, and we saw a group of those flowers, she said, there's Larry's flowers. So, they're much appreciated by everybody, and I think they're great. Thank you.
Alderman May.
Thank you, I'll be quick. Not to belabor the whole parking issue, but just to be very clear, the parking on Elmwood between Golf and Blanchard is just switching from one side to the other. You'll see the city crews out there changing the signs to the residents out there, and you'll, then you'll know. We are not taking away your parking completely. And then the other comment I just want to make really quick, Julie Ahern spoke at the beginning of the meeting, she's a Seventh Ward resident. She is, she has the nickname around the school district as the Grant Queen. As of February last year, she had already raised more than seventy-five thousand dollars for her classroom and other classrooms at Cook Magnet. She is a dynamo. So there's a lot of people out there who are on Facebook, and Facebook does a lot of good, I know everyone thinks, a lot of people think it's a big waste of time, but there's a lot of good things that happen through Facebook. So if you go to, a lot of the schools have their own Facebook pages, you could search Andrew Cook Magnet School. Julie's voting contests are always on there. Take a minute, take, you know, take five minutes when you're on Facebook, and look for some of these things, and vote for these causes that really help put more money into our schools. And so the current contest right now is Kris Wine, K-R-I-S Wine. You'll find them on Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Tempest, I'm a little disappointed that you made mention of the flowers here tonight that you cut. My wife and I had an argument before I left here, before I left home today on my way, before I got here, and I was gonna bring them home to say that I had bought them for you, but now she's probably watching this on television, so I can't do that. I am going to have a ward meeting at Mid Lane Country Club for the residents of the Eighth Ward on October thirtieth, it's a Wednesday night, from six-thirty to eight o'clock in the, excuse me, from six-thirty to eight o'clock in the Monterey Room on the east side of the facility there. So all you residents that will see this on Sunday night, please attend if you can. The second thing I would like to say this evening is that you all know, most of you know, that I am a strong advocate for the downtown area. My wife and I had the pleasure of going down Saturday night to see Carnegie Hill, that's a comedy about a office full of women that sells real estate, and it's hilarious. Kudos to Madeline Surgeon, who is, I think, one of the producers on this show, and obviously, she's also the artistic director. But I saw Jamie O'Meara down there, and I saw Chris Segren, who sells real estate. But I saw Jamie O'Meara down there, and I saw Chris Segren, who sells real estate. And during the intermission, I asked Chris, I says, "Is this in any way like what you do when you sell real estate?" She goes, "No way." I really would like to ask you people to go down there, it's fantastic. The cast includes a young lady from Waukegan, actually two people from Waukegan, Highland Park, Chicago, Lake Villa, Morton Grove, and Glenview. I go there quite a bit, my wife and I have been going there for the last two years, and out of all those shows, this is the best show that was there. So I ask you to go down there. The last thing, it was mentioned this evening already about trick-or-treat, please, the 27th, it's a Sunday from 2:00 to 4:00, please be careful. Watch out for the kids when they're trick-or-treating. That's all I have, sir.
Alderman Rivera.
I'll be quick, this Saturday, I spent about an hour and a half over at the Art Space, Cartra Hotel, with one of the photographers there, Eric, and I was so impressed with the work that he does, his studio. Let me tell you, I, you know, for the residents, for the people of Waukegan, I believe that everything that you need or are looking for in terms of whatever, music, art, whatever it may be, photography, I would highly recommend. All you got to do is just make a phone call there, and they're there, you know, whatever you need. So it'd be great if, if Art Space could, you know, somehow, you know, promote that, you know, to the rest of the city in regards to any, any services that you would need. They're there, so it'll also help them do as well, you know, financially, so it's there, there's no question about it. So, thank you.
Alderman Cunningham.
Yeah, two things, I like to speak to the, to the grants for kids, I think if we take a look over the, the two schools that have really participated, and as Alderman May has said, Ms. Earnhardt has, I think has spearheaded, if not started, an epidemic in our city, and that is how to get our communities back involved with our schools. And what better way to do it in a fun, spirited way? And I tell you, I'm not a huge fan of going on the internet and voting and all that good stuff, but just getting caught up in that, you know, in all of that excitement, you find yourself not only voting for your school, calling friends, you get to call friends who don't even know anything about your school, it's just like, and the next thing you know, it just balloons into a huge community outreach to help our schools. But the good part is, Carmen School, Carmen Buckner, and Andrew Cook have both won as they participated. And the winning spirit has come from definitely the students and their parents of both of those schools, but the involvement and the pride that comes in, and them seeing it in the look on those kids' face when their school wins. That is what I think the spirit, I think we were talking about earlier, of Waukegan, and how we get those neighborhood schools back involved. That's a great, great effort to do that, and kudos go out to Ms. Earnhardt for really starting that epidemic. It started in Andrew Cook, and now it has ballooned throughout the city of Waukegan and the rest of the schools. Second, last, at last council meeting, I talked about what I call an abandonment from our College of Lake County, our community-based school, when it comes to GED, education, and the community partners that it has created. I'm going to talk about this subject every week, I'm going to bring something new every week, until COC, the president, the board, and all of those involved come and talk to us and give us a legitimate reason why you're taking away the very essence of what you're supposed to be doing. I'm highly disappointed in how their arrogance with this subject. And then they had the audacity to put in, reduce, Coalition to Reduce Recidivism, inside-out. And I'm going to read specifically from the jail. The Lake County Jail, for years, has invested in the idea of rehabilitation, rehabilitating incarcerated adults through the power of education. The investment has produced a favorable return by graduating close to 100 inmates annually with a GED. It is understood that the lack of basic education, which is equivalent to a high school diploma or GED, can create a multitude of problems for an incarcerated individual upon exiting the correctional system. No childhood dreams involves going to jail or prison. No one grows up saying, "I want to be a failure in life." But choices are made, things happen, you have, you have to move on, continue to grow despite the roadblocks. Here it is, they are praising the GED program inside the county jail, Youth Build, YCC, our own library, our own library, and a host of other partners. But this is the kicker for me. In 2006, more African-American men ages 20 to 34 without a high school diploma or GED were behind bars, 37% of them unemployed. What do you need? What else do you need to validate that this is one of the most important programs on the face of this earth? Another kicker, those partners that they have created over the years graduate more GED students than the North Shore and Graves Lake campus combined. I'm going to talk about it everywhere I go, I'm going to bring it up here, because someone needs to get off their butts and tell me why this is happening. And I prefer them to come to this council meeting, where the vast majority of these kids, young men and young ladies, are being affected, live in our city. This is not a something, it's a program you want, you are abandoning the very efforts, basic things you're supposed to be doing as a community college. So I hope this goes out to them and rings out, and I'm asking the Coalition to Reduce Recidivism, get on board with this. Anyone, anyone who's a part of this can talk to these folks over there, they need to understand, you just can't get up and walk out anytime you want to. Thank you.
Alderman Conkin.
Thank you, just a couple of things. One, I was at Art Walk and Zombie Walk this weekend downtown. It was a very brisk night, but there was a lot to see and a lot to do, and I think that the main site did a wonderful job. Alderman Tempest, again, thank you for the flowers, they're wonderful, I know everybody sees them, and I'll be over at your house to get some bulbs from you. And finally, you know, we recognize the World War II hero there today, deservedly so, and his generation's been called the greatest generation for years, and I think the reasons are obvious. But today's generation, sometimes you hear is called the Me Generation, and they only worry about themselves. Obviously, Susan Chavez is absolutely the opposite of that. But there was one set of people I think that needed to be thanked, they were also, and we were, I was remiss in not recognizing them, but it's Susan's parents, they obviously raised the wonderful girl, and I'm sure their whole family and everybody was raised the same. So I think that with kids like this, we're going to be okay. Thank you.
Alderman Moizio.
Just to echo Alderman Conkin's comment, Susan's a former student of mine, and she's a wonderful person, obviously, her actions show that, and obviously to her parents too, obviously, they raised a very thoughtful young lady. And then with a heavy heart, I have to announce that Velma Dobie, a longtime secretary at the high school, she retired, but she has passed on, and my condolences go to her and her family. She was a wonderful lady, Alderman Tempest may remember, I don't know, she might have been at West, some of the other people might, nor Chief Yancey knows the family, Dobie's a longtime family in Waukegan, and just my condolences to the family. Thank you.
Alderman Beedling.
The parents that drive their children to school and pick them up, I don't work anymore, this is my only job, so I pretty much spend my entire day in the ward, and I observe a lot of things, and I see a lot of stay-at-home mothers, but yet, we give out 17,000, or we offer 17,000 free breakfast and free lunch in the school. I see free cell phones, tent, or whatever you call it, on North Genesee there. You know, there's a lot of free services out there, but there's no, no performance from the parents in, in the school. You know, how do you, how do you end up 18, 19, 20 years old, 21, 22? You're in jail, you don't have a high school diploma? Well, how did you get there? What did your parents do? It doesn't seem, it seems that there's no performance demanded from the parents, either from the state or the school district. If you look at some of the test scores by their own statistics, there's a pretty fair percentage of children that are two and three grade levels below reading comprehension on the eighth grade test. How do you get into eighth grade when you're, when you're not reading up to grade in the first place? You know, maybe they need to start flunking some of these kids. I found a paper, a test paper on my sidewalk the other day. This child scored eight out of 25. I don't know, maybe that's the reason it was sitting on the sidewalk? Maybe the parents don't bother coming in to communicate with the teachers what their children are doing? But it seems like in today's society, everything's so easy, it's all free, we give everything out for free. Everybody wants more benefits. Well, we're bankrupt, our state's bankrupt. Families have to start taking care of their own families, parents have to ensure that their children are doing their studies, we have a wonderful library in this community, I spoke to Mr. Lee today about a few issues that are coming up. I did see a lot of people sitting at computers in there, mostly adults, but once again, as I see children in the neighborhoods, I'll write Khan Academy on the back of my business card and ask them, you know, "Put it on your search engine, check it out when you get home, if you're behind in math, you can easily get yourself caught up, you learn by rote, check it out." But I, you know, it seems like government, everybody wants to do something for someone. Our main mission here is to make sure that our infrastructure is up to date, we maintain public safety, and social engineering just isn't, isn't our job. That's all I have to say.
Alderman Newsom.
Yes, thank you. I would like to announce the 61st Annual Pancake Day for the Waukegan Exchange Club. It's going to be held this Saturday, October 26, from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Bonnie Brook Golf Course Clubhouse. The tickets are $5 for adults, ages 5 to 12, $2, and we will also be accepting coats, we're going to do a coat drive for children. We'll be accepting coats and hats and mittens, gloves, snow pants, new or slightly used. For those that don't know what the Waukegan Exchange Club is, a national organization for the prevention of child abuse. And some of the events that we hold each year, we do a Waukegan Police Officers and Patrol Persons of the Year Award, we do the Firefighters and Sheriff's Department Award for the Year, we do a Young Citizenship Award, we do an ACE Award, Youth of the Month, we have a youth that comes in, and they are recommended by their counselor, and they get money to go to college. We also do a Golden Deeds, Book of Golden Deeds Award, and give a child a flag. So those that come out, all you can eat, pancakes, sausage, coffee. We also have room for volunteers that may want to come in and serve on Saturday, that time again is 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Thank you.
Motion by Alderman Beedling, seconded by Alderman Rivera to adjourn. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.